The board is back in session. This is the regular business meeting of the Riverside District 96 Board of Education. At this point, are there -- I see we have -- I guess there's one person who'd like to speak. Ms. Jane Laurison?
(laughing) Get her a sign. Performer in art. So hello everyone. My name is Jane Laurison and I am the music teacher here at Ames School. Before I proceed, I would like to thank the board for all the time they've already spent, presently spend, and I know in the future will spend, to guard our district so that our children will have the best of education. I also would like to recognize a number of colleagues that aren't here for me, but are here for something else. I speak as a 15-year, tenured music educator in this district, as a neighbor, who has lived in Riverside for 16 years, and as a parent of three children who went to Central School, Howzer and Riverside High School, two of which have gone on to get their masters and their bachelors, one which is -- who is in the middle of her bachelors degree and will finish about a year and a half. And no, we don't have any money. But I'm grateful for my job and their achievements, I believe, are a testament to the wonderful district that we have and the educational opportunities that they've received here. So for that, I'm deeply grateful. I've taught at all four elementary schools and am currently responsible for the music education both here at Ames School and at Blythe Park. I was at the last board meeting in April and was very pleased to hear that the administration had recommended that the overcrowding at Ames School be diminished through limiting our kindergarten to two in this coming 2016-17 school year, and I'm here just to support that recommendation. Over the past two years, due to the overcrowding at Ames School, the general music program has been relegated to this wonderful multipurpose room, the orchestra to the library and the band to the gym. Although all possible accommodations have been made by your most leader, Mr. Kirman, and our wonderful phenomenal custodian, Mr. Bosco, to make this a workable situation. For example, getting the large freezer out so that the children could hear themselves sing and play, which was a wonderful thing. It still is not an optimal learning situation as I am able to provide over at Blythe Park School and Bill Howser is able to provide at Howser, Hollywood and Central through a designated classroom. Here at Ames, the music program is sandwiched between before and after care program, lunch, cleanup, Girl Scouts, chess club. There is never a time when I can actually work with students before, during or after school in preparation with solo parts or group parts for the veteran state programs or the holiday programs. I have to sort of go through the building and see what I can find. It's a challenge to pull out all the instruments which are back there hidden behind some closets. I have to take them out in the morning, put them away at lunch, my muscles are strong, take them out again at lunch, after lunch, and then put them away at the end of the day. I do have a desk at the back of the art room for planning, which I'm grateful for. Overcrowding is experienced in different ways here at Ames School. We have a 312-capacity fire code in the gymnasium, and with a student body of 357 and over 30 staff members at least, it is necessary that we have split assemblies unless special accommodations are made. We have a classroom that has no windows to accommodate an extra section of 4th grade. At present, we have science experiments which are creatively done in the hallway. Our library has lost hours for the majority of the students as it has been necessary to house the orchestra and the math quest program. Presently at Ames, we have two kindergarteners, two kindergarten classes. If Ames could have one more of these two sections during '16-'17, the following could happen at Ames. A classroom would open up for general music, providing equal opportunity to Ames students as it is available at other elementary schools. The library could return several hours of access to the majority of the Ames students with the placing of the orchestra and math quest program in the all-purpose room, for example. The all-purpose room itself could become a multipurpose room servicing the entire faculty and student body for class conversations, science experiments, small group classes, grade-level meetings, PTA meetings, and test programs, et cetera. As part of a point of history, and perhaps you know this, and forgive me if you do, this was an accommodation that past administration intentionally made when most recently in the years 2008, '09, and '10, a kindergarten class was moved for two consecutive years to Blythe Park School. The benefits of implementing the flexible boundary accommodations reduced the impact of an overpopulated Ames School and responsibly used available space at Blythe Park School, the school that presently has the most green space in the district yet has the least amount of students. I conclude with a thought. Just as one needs to breathe to sing beautifully and perhaps to maintain some balance in our personal lives, so children need breathing room for optimal learning. Prior to teaching in Riverside, I taught at a school on the south side of Chicago where classes were 30-plus and the typical elementary school was around 800. The overcrowding we experienced produced frenetic and anxiety-ridden faculty and students. I don't think that needs to be the case in Riverside, and ask that you seriously support what is best for the students here at Ames School. And with all due respect, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Laurison.
Thank you.
It's always very useful for the board to hear directly from, you know, people who are knowledgeable about issues like this, so thank you very much. So if there are no further public comments, we next move on to the -- are there changes to the agenda? Are there any changes that they would like to propose to the agenda tonight? If there are no changes, then we move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, we're going to begin with a welcome by our host principal. Mr. Kirman.
Thank you very much. Welcome, District 96 Board of Education, to Ames. It was a pleasure to host this meeting tonight. I was flattered when Superintendent Powell came up to me. Dr. Powell said, you know, "You get to host a meeting and you get to highlight some things you're most proud of for being the principal here at Ames Elementary School."
Within 30 seconds, I think I said that.
No, well, I asked him for 20. I said, "Well, if it's the stuff I'm most proud of, I need at least 20 minutes." He goes, and I think I'll quote him right now, "You got about three minutes, bud. I'm going to cut you off."[444.22][444.22](laughing) And that sounds like Dr. Powell, doesn't it? So with that being said, I had to immediately go to what was on the top of my list, and that would be how proud I am of our Positive Behavior Systems and Supports Program we have here at Ames Elementary School. Casimera Gorman and I started the district-wide committee last school year, and from that it evolved into building-wide committees. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to my building-wide committee because I want them to be able to share all the wonderful things we do. I'm going to introduce them to you. We have Melissa Cavey, our school psychologist. You can come on as I introduce you, because they're going to -- they put together a quick presentation. It is under three minutes. We timed it. We have Carrie Levin, who is our school social worker here at Ames. Alejandro Gavia Lopez, who is our TVE, Transitional bilingual Education Teacher here at Ames. Sean Bartel, PE at Ames and Blythe Park. Tina Doovie, 4th grade here at Ames. Katie Samuels, kindergarten. And Natalie Geiger, 1st grade. And this is our Ames PBSS committee, and they want to share with you all the wonderful things we've accomplished over the past couple of years here. I'm going to turn it over to them.
By the way, you don't have to rush. Three minutes for him.[506.03][506.03](laughing)
So I got a little -- I got some more time.
(laughing)
So I have a little bit more time.[510.53][510.53](laughing) Okay, I'm going to hand it over because we're going to get on with the show. And Carrie, you're the clicker, right?
I'm the clicker.
Excellent, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kirman, for that introduction. My name is Natalie Geiger, 1st grade here at Ames. Just to start off, our PBS program here, our motto with students for consistency within the building is the Dolphin Way, and with that, students are asked and reminded and encouraged to be respectful, be responsible, and safe throughout their daily educational activities.
Okay, and with our model, there's two parts that we put in place this year that we're very proud of. The first part of that is teaching expectations and reviewing these expectations on a daily and ongoing basis. So we taught these expectations at the beginning of the year through expectation assemblies that we'll talk about in a little bit of a later slide, and then reviewing those ongoing and also on a daily basis. And another thing that we did is recognizing when students show the behaviors that we're looking for. So when they do show these behaviors, whether if that's just recognizing them in the hallway or in these more special assemblies that we'll also talk about on a later slide.
Another thing we continued to do this year was teach second-step curriculum, which is part of our social-emotional learning curriculum, which tie hand-in-hand with the Illinois Social Emotional Learning Standards. And something that we've done with PBSS is tried to marry the two and use common language.
And as part of the program, we teach and reinforce these expectations throughout the school year, but not only in the classrooms, but also in different common areas such as the hallway, the lunchroom, cafeteria, so the kids know what the behavior, the expectation is in every one of these areas. And here you see some of our staff members at the beginning of the school year actually modeling and teaching those expectations to the students.
This slide here shows the celebration assemblies. They're held roughly once a month, and this is where we recognize those students who go above and beyond in displaying the Dolphin Way to their teachers. They've been going great. It's an experiential activity where teachers participate, students participate, and the students in the stands have loved watching their peers play with the teachers. They're acknowledged in front of their peers, and it's been a really positive experience to grow school spirit and community around this common language of being respectful, responsible, and safe.
You stole my thunder.[666.01][666.01](laughing) It really is a culmination, though, and though we are recognizing the students who go above and beyond, I think as you can see from the pictures where you -- well, it was there, but the kids that were in the stands, it truly is school-wide participation and, you know, the extension of learning not only to celebrate those who are going about how do we behave in that environment, because what we're taking at Ames, we want them to take that outside of our building also.
As a culminating activity, students had the opportunity to illustrate themselves or demonstrating ways to show the Dolphin Way, so how to be respectful, responsible, and safe. And one student was chosen from each class to have their illustration hung outside of the office for open house and the remainder of the year. This activity was led by the classroom teachers as our final expectation assembly, and it was really cool to hear the open, honest conversations of them sharing ways that they are respectful and safe and responsible at school, and some even shared ways that they can improve on those three areas.
And we truly are ending our school year here at Ames in a fantastic way. We're having an end-of-year celebration at our field day. And Carrie, do me a favor, click back to that second slide with the dolphin mascot.[757.51][757.51](laughing) All the way back, all the way back. Okay, guess who that is? That's the world's tallest dolphin.[763.23][763.23](laughing) Yeah, and it's a hit. We had him dressed up as the dolphin for Spring Open House. So there was actually a photo shoot. So next year, when we're going to the Spring Open House, we're going to have people bring in a can of food to take a picture with the dolphin. So we're combining a food drive with pictures with the dolphin. Okay, now we go back the other way. Okay, very -- I just can't tell you how proud I am of this team and our students and staff here at Ames. And there's a picture of some of our staff. We're in the process of designing our shirt for next school year, but when you, you know, when I think of Ames, I think of teamwork and just a group of professionals that are centered around what's doing best for students every single day they walk foot in Ames School, and I'm very proud of everything we have taught for our students. Thank you very much for letting me have the floor for -- and you're keeping time, aren't you?
300-plus. Thank all of you. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.[809.45][809.45](applause) Are there any questions at all about that? I don't know if it's appropriate to ask, but if there are any, I'll be happy to field any questions. The team can field any questions.
And the best news is you don't have to stay with me.[824.51][824.51](laughing)
Oh, good.
No, you have to stay. Sorry.
Thank you, guys.
And Ms. Brownlow, could you take us through the board salute?
Well, I'm actually going to turn it over to Mrs. Kleiber. So as part of our acknowledgement of all the hard work of our students this year, we decided we wanted to highlight the District 96 accomplishments. And next year, we're going to make this more of a monthly routine, but the idea came to us midstream, so we decided to just make it a May board salute. So Mrs. Kleiber is going to read sort of the summary of the board salutes, and in your packet and publicly displayed on the websites are all the backup pages with all the individual student names listed for all their accomplishments, so we can -- Bob, take note of all the amazing things our kids have done. We're very proud. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kleiber.
Yes, and, you know, I'm going to do my best to pronounce names. Forgive me if I don't, but I was -- I'm not surprised by the amount of amazing things, but it was a pleasant thing to read and to see all the, you know, whether it's sports or academics. These are involved kids, the parents and the staff supporting them, the coaches after school, so it's really special to see. So on behalf of the District 96 Board of Education, please accept our congratulations. I'm going to read several names from elementary and middle school. We're very proud of the talents that our students have demonstrated in the areas of academics, the arts, and athletics. I'm going to recognize at the elementary level, 20 students who were winners in the American Association of University Women Poster Art and Contest, 14 students who were Riverside Poetry winners, and that was for the National PTA Association, 12 students participated in the WSEAE Zoo Science Fair in February, and Sophie Kleiber won Future Scientist Award.
No relation, right?
No.
You don't know her.
Yeah. At the elementary, middle school, we had 35 students whose artwork was displayed at the WSEAE Art Show Exhibition at the Chaney Mansion in April, and the following students were landmark design ad winners. Olivia Glave, Anna Hooglander, Quinn Cale, Simona Sominas, and Caitlin Vitek. And then at the middle school, we have, of course, a larger group of students with some amazing things happening. We had a geography B winner, Noah Bright; spelling B winner, Zaya Martinez; book bowl winners, Sophia Arcos, Mary Henley, and Emma Yakni; writing contest winners, Olivia Janunes, Tess Obakowski, Emma Yakni; and we had 10 history B winners, Michael Adler, James Berger, Emily Cole, Theo Moriarty, Tess Obakowski, Jonah Rath, Luke Ralph, and Leah Matthews, the special congratulations, who was the overall regional champion. So that's amazing. The IMSA math team, we had a first place overall for our Howser kids. 12 7th graders took first place, and the 12 8th graders who took third place. We had a WSEAE Academic Talent Search Award. Michael Adler, Wrigley Brick, Emily Cole, Antonia Kritikos, Zach Osgood, Stephen Sandusky, Cameron Winkler, Michael Zinn, Ethan Miller, Grayson Pekurek, and Luke Ralph. We also had, in the arts, 28 students on the speech and drama team who took first place in the West Forty Competition. I mean, this is just -- I'm still amazed by the amount of things going on. The music department awarded 12 ILMEA winners, eight solo contest winners, and seven student-winning director awards. And this one is very special to my heart, too. We had some regional Special Olympic winners, Erin Anderson, gold medal 100-meter dash. We have bronze medal long jump also, and Marissa Bloodgood took gold medal for 50-meter dash. So that's really amazing. And lastly, we had some amazing sports at Howser. We have conference champion teams, 7th grade girls' basketball, 7th grade girls' volleyball, 8th grade girls' volleyball, 8th grade girls' volleyball, I guess it's -- oh, boys' volleyball, and 8th grade coed soccer. So congratulations to all of the parents and, you know, supporting them and the students who work so hard, and all the coaches and the people that we don't see every day supporting their kids. So so proud of our kids. Thanks. And so if you want to read all the individual names for all those organizations, they are posted on the website.
So you can see all the people on the volleyball team and all the different names. But that's really special. Thanks to Merle for gathering that.
After many rewrites. It's a lot of kids to keep track of.
It's a lot of kids, but it was -- it's neat to see you to one place, and I don't think we've ever done that before.
I like the idea of that.
Yeah.
So we can be timely about it.
It'd be more timely, right. This is through the whole year, and I think it's neat to see it in culmination in May, so.
An idea to consider is your board policy dictates that you should rotate meetings at different buildings.
Yeah.
And when you go to Ames, maybe invite the Ames kids that you want to recognize, and same with Hollywood, same, you know. So that's an advantage of going to the neighborhood, so something to consider. Martha, you consider. I don't have to worry about it.[1160.07][1160.07](laughing) Summer school update real briefly. Our registrations are down, Merle. Any other?
No, they're not actually.
They have increased since I was here last.
Did you look at your board packet?
Yes.
(laughing) They are, they're better. I need that, thank you. So once, they're better than last year. A couple weeks ago, we were a little concerned because it was coming in really slowly, and then up to the revision from the board packet this week, they actually went up. So here you see some improved numbers compared to last year. So I grouped this because once we looked at enrollment, we said we weren't going to run a class that had less than six students enrolled. And so in some sections, you'll see notes that I say we have to look at combining sections to create the class. So this is projected still at the moment until we do all the confirmations. And registration is going to remain open through June 15. And then we have to make determinations about classroom use because of the construction starting June 7. So I'm going to sit with Bill Radke this week and sort of look at projected classroom space between Central and Howser. So in the transition to K course last year, the enrollment was four, and currently we have three students enrolled in each of two sections, so we'll be combining that to run one section currently at six as of today. So could increase. Transition to Howser, last year there were only 11 students enrolled, and so right now we have 14 students across four sections. So we're going to run two sections of seven at the moment unless we get more enrollment. Robotics, last year we had five. We have seven enrolled currently. Last year, drama was not offered. This year, we have six students enrolled with five in one section and one in another, so we're going to ask the one to shift, see if they can shift. Science was not offered last year either. Currently, we have five enrolled in each of those sections, so if we get one more in each, we'll be able to run them separately. Otherwise, we'll look to combine them. The neighborhoods class didn't have enough enrollment to run last year, so currently we have five students interested in that. You see, again, we might need to combine. Healthy Life wasn't offered either, and we have five in that across three sections, so we'll try to combine as well. Writing, we did not offer because it was an outsourced program last year, and cost-wise, it was prohibited for the amount of enrollment that we had for six students. So we did not offer that this year. So if you look at the totals, last year there were 26 students enrolled in enrichment courses, and that's bodies, when I say enrollment, it's bodies enrolled. So it could be one student taking two different classrooms, just to be clear. This year, we have 53 slots enrolled, so it's almost doubled in the enrichment. And then for skill building, last year at this time, we had 62 students that actually took part in the program. This year, we have 72 slots filled at this point. So a total of 125 over 88 last year. So it is up at this point. One of the things that we were looking at was when do we close to be sure that we can let the teachers know that they have a class to teach and that we can fill it. So we're going to go through till June 15. We're going to send out another blast next week so that there's two weeks before school, two and a half weeks before school ends to get your registrations in, and then another few days after that for any stagger, you know, any that are still lingering out there. We have all the classes staffed with appropriate personnel with qualifications to teach. I know, Randy, that was one of your questions that was posed. And we either have a teacher with special education background, an interventionist, or an appropriate grade-level classroom teacher, so intermediate teacher for 3, 4, 5, or a primary teacher for K-1, 2 for the skill-building classes. So we feel very good about the quality and caliber of the people that will be delivering the remedial instruction. And Kim has tightened up her recommendations for the curriculum being used in those classes as well. And then as far as notification, that was another question that I had. Skill-building families each received an electronic invitation as well as a hard copy invitation, and we reached out to anybody that we didn't get a direct response from to remind them that they had that opportunity. And we do have three scholarship families for summer school so far. Lastly, one of the things that Ms. Hefner and I are thinking about, by the way, she's ill today, so that's why she's not here, but we would like to convene a committee to just relook at summer school in general. So we would like some staff and some parents and some students to be a part of that conversation to look at our current model and create a vision for the future because it's -- and we also need to talk with the board a little bit about what's the cost-benefit in terms of what we want to expand on the program, because if you build it, it's likely, especially from an enrichment perspective, to cost more to run. So what do we want for that? So what are those things that we could create without creating a cost associated with it? And the timing of the program, are there models that would serve us better? Should we do enrichment in June and skill-building in August and split the program potentially? So that's one of the things we were talking about, is the timing difficult being closer to the start of the year versus right after the school year ends. So we'd like to explore some of those questions that we have about how we continue to maintain enrollment. But right now, we're not concerned with respect to historical enrollment, if that makes sense. Questions?
Do you think enrollment is going to continue to increase this year?
Well, I think we certainly will pick up a few more skill-building students, for sure. And enrichment-wise, it's hard to say, but, you know, camps at this point are filling up, and so if people are getting into the camps that they want, we might pick up some additional students in a couple of weeks.
Skill-building this year, it's, there's no charge to the students?
No, it's $50.
$50, okay.
So it's a discounted.
Discounted from last year's rate.
Well, it's, yes, because we're running it four days a week, so we, it's almost flat in terms of the cost for the number of hours that they're getting of instruction from last year. We offered a discount rate last year.
Yeah. Of the 72 signed up, how many families were notified?
All of them.
Uh, what do you mean? Skill-building.
They were all notified. Every skill-building student got an invitation to participate in the class.
Yeah. Well, yeah, how many skill-building students are there that?
Oh, how many total? 183.
183, 183. So we got 70.
We got about almost half.
Almost half, okay.
Yeah, a little less than half, which is pretty typical at this point.
Thank you.
And we extended skill-building pretty generously through our Tier 2, Tier 2. Okay.
One last fast item. At the last meeting, you asked me to project or survey the needs for hot lunches at our three elementaries, Blythe Park, Hollywood, and Ames. And what I did is I went to Central, suggestion by Jeff, took a look at what the percentage of hot lunches there, excluding free and reduced, is 16-17 percent. And with that amount, you could pretty much guess that would be similar to this building and also Hollywood and Blythe Park. I would not be recommending that you spend the kind of money that we talked about for capital equipment, extra personnel, a truck, you know, some to drive it for that percentage of students. Let me know if you disagree, but that would be, would not be recommending. And if you want further discussion of that, let me know. Otherwise, it's not such an issue we'd be pursuing or telling Martha to pursue at this point.
Oh, and one more follow-up to just Randy's question.
Yeah.
Just to let you know, 6, 7, and 8th grade skill-building enrollment is very low. So a big chunk of the students that were invited from the middle school, that's where your lack of enrollment is coming from, just to clarify.
Lack of what?
Enrollment for the skill-building is mostly the middle school.
Okay. They know everything, right?
Of course they do. They're in middle school.[1672.36][1672.36](laughing)
That's it. Okay, thank you, Dr. Paul. We next come to our consent agenda, so we usually ask the board secretary to brief the agenda, and then we ask if anyone wants to take any items off. So maybe you can give us a brief consent agenda.
All right. The items on the consent agenda are, 1, minutes of the previous meetings. 1A, minutes of the regular board of education meeting, April 19, 2016. B, minutes of the April 26, 2016 special meeting. C, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting from May 3, 2016. D, minutes of the closed session number one for May 3, 2016. And E, minutes of the closed session number two for May 3, 2016. Second item is the personnel report, including A, the 2016-17 staff appointments. Third item is the payables pre-list as of April 29, 2016. Item four is payables pre-list as of May 17, 2016. Item five is the district staff non-union 2016-17 salaries. Item six is the Ladsy classroom at Blythe Park School. Item seven is early childhood education, ECE, additional section at Blythe Park School. And finally, item eight, Policy 7:190 Student Behavior.
At this point, are there any items?
I would like to take off number five and not prefer, and will be not, no further discussion brought back in general.
Okay, the district staff.
Non-union salaries.
17 salaries, okay. Are there any other items that I would like to take off the consent agenda at this point? If there are no other items, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item number five?
So moved.
Second.[1788.41][1788.41](laughing)
Marching people, will we?
Mr. Regan.
Hi.
Mrs. Morello.
Hi.
Mr. Brockway.
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber.
We also had an update on the Quest audit process for next year. That'll be happening with committees and an auditor, and it should be pretty thorough. Also, teacher evaluation plan has come to fruition, and it's a very good thing. And also, the Hauser schedule is discussed with Ms. May, Mr. Smith, and so in progress. Thanks.
And then, did you have any policy committee?
No, if you can remember, from May 3rd, we had a very short policy list. We were just looking at the attorney review of policy 7:190, which has already been approved and all the discussed.
Did you have any compliance committee notes?
Mr. Sellers has prepared a nice summary of the projects that we have going on this summer. I don't know if everybody caught that in the board book. Is it, is it a good idea for us to go over that in detail right now and have Mr. Sellers review it? Or is everyone up to speed on all these projects?
Okay.
Is there anything new that sort of we haven't heard before that we haven't listened to over here?
The only major change is another agenda item related to the Blythe Park windows. The rest have been presented and I believe discussed with the board in the past.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I do have a question on one of the projects. Are we not going to follow, to pursue the paving over in Hollywood then?
It was a limbo last time. I don't think we came to a firm decision.
No, I don't think we did.
Intent right now is to do it.
The board would have to act to approve a change order, a deductive change order. That amount was $39,000. And it is a mill down and repave. There's no full-depth reconstruction of the paved area. And at this time, absent board action, that would proceed.
And I think we were, we were only considering it due to the fact that we were considering building a playground in one small section of that, right?
Yeah, there were certain different ideas tossed around, but that was, you know, one idea was the prepay back in the corner behind the school.
And, but that affected the paving, correct? Yes.
There is another question I have, which is I know that Ms. Hefner talked about possibly using some of that space back there as a garden for the kids. And I think, remember, collect the three cars parked there? So it's making, we still preserve that space and still have room for a garden. Is that something to consider about in terms of the general question about whether we should proceed with paving? I guess, was the recommendation, the administration, do you have a recommendation?
At this point, would be to proceed with paving. At this point. Have you heard anything else just for us to make change, that recommendation? Because I felt the board was not ready to move on the, putting the playground over there. That was something I think you rejected.
If there's an interest in a certain section being taken out, we can communicate with Kim Hefner, the principal, and ask. We could process a deductive change order for a small piece.
And you still have time in June to, if you wanted to cut out an area for a garden and still get the paving.
It would have to be brought forward before June 7th. So.
Oh, we have a board meeting on June 2nd, or we're going to propose one or something.
Right, so we have between now and then to process any other ideas. But, yeah, the, all the heavy equipment will be fully mobilized on June 7th.
It would be worth asking Ms. Hefner if there's a small section she wants to take out of her garden. I don't know, doesn't seem to be she's interested in it. In terms of the general project, I guess my, my hope is that, or my expectation is we'll be able to work out an arrangement with the HCA to use their land. Still, 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 we believe that the expectation of the board, right, we're going to work something out. It's not a guarantee.
Yeah, it's not a guarantee. I would be remiss to pursue this project, given that we don't, we're not for sure what we want to do. And I think we need to take a step back and look at what we want to do with the entire piece of land there. And I'd hate to undo something that we spent all this money on a year from now if we change our mind.
I agree, Rachel.
Yeah, thanks.
I agree with that. We don't really want to undo something that we did. I guess this comes down to probability, just the probability that's going to strike a deal. It's very high, it's not a risk. It's outside, it's more risky. What do other people think about this?
So with that said, are you saying that we just proceed with the paving?
No, I'm saying that we shouldn't do it this year until we decide for sure what we're going to do with the playground, where we're going to put it.
I see.
Or them, depending if there's more than one now. Because I don't think we, we haven't really truly evaluated all the options yet, or I should say the committee has. Yeah.
It would be a shame to spend that money on there and have to backtrack at a certain point. So I guess the question is, is there enough indecision about the potential use of that area for us to, to, to put the brakes on repaving?
Yes.
But we're just talking about those three, three parking places, aren't we? And that's the only, the only part in play.
No, it was just one recommendation.
I think there's two considerations. It's the, it's not repaving the whole area. And then option two is not repaving that corner so the principal can exercise a garden back there. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess the likelihood of eliminating the parking lot totally, wouldn't be the chance of that. I mean, I, I haven't heard anybody even discuss that as a possibility.
No, I think there was a suggestion, possible suggestion. I don't know, I don't know how far it went. I don't think it went far just on idea. That's true. Strip of the parking lot would be used for playground. And then it wouldn't really, probably reduce the parking so much.
The back section was the one I understood. But now also in the.
I heard, again, I don't think the committee's evaluating these options, so it's speculative.
Yeah, if people are speculating that, then you shouldn't do it. If you're actually thinking now of using part of that back area and not even cuts, considering the side where we talked about putting the preschool playground in, then you shouldn't, shouldn't do anything.
So we got two areas really kind of at play.
Right. If you're considering the open area, you know, where it's total parking lot and also play area, then you probably shouldn't do anything if that's.
It might, I mean, my sense is, I don't know if the board agrees, is that ideally we'll strike an agreement with the HCA and we don't have to worry about that. Is that, is that correct? That would be the best case scenario.
That's my hope as well.
That's my hope as well. It's a hope, but I think we always need a backup plan, and I'm remiss again to do that now. I'm not sure where we'll land. And the other, the other consideration here too is, I'm curious, it's a one-section school. How many people are, how many staff members are actually using it? It's not like the, the high school where they're constantly having sporting events and you don't, children who are driving.
It's used for a playground.
Right now?
Right now, it's used for a playground.
It's used for resa, right, for typical. But there are plenty, there are cars that park around the perimeter.
Around the perimeter, right.
Right. And I know I've heard a lot of concern from Hollywood parents that the pickup and parking in that area is insane at the moment. So I know when we were discussing reducing the parking lot, I heard from several people that they would really want that to be looked into because even if you're just displacing three cars from the parking lot, that's three less spots for anybody to come during the day and park close, or to even just allow the pickup line. I mean, I'm not familiar with how it works out, but I know that even just the three cars seem to be an issue with some parents in Hollywood. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of indecision as well.
Do, does, Mr. Sellers, do you think there's a question about whether, if we deferred this, do you think we'd be able to get a quote similar in the future? I mean, is this incredibly good quote, and then whenever it's taken?
It's a good quote, that's what I was just looking at. Your, your quote is 39,810. The average from the eight bidders was 46,176, which is a 16 percent, 16 percent higher than what you have in your hand as far as the, the cost.
Well, we have until June 2nd, right? Mr. Sellers?
The, the board has to ask the contractor to submit a deductive change order. I'd have to consult with our architect. There's nothing contractual they have to, I guess we'd have to say, at this time, that alternate is not being awarded, but the board did award the alternate before. If the contractor is unhappy about that, they may say that there's an opportunity cost that would reduce the, the deductive amount. But I, I'm not, I'm really not familiar with this kind of a situation where, where, you know, this large a segment of a, of a project is, is terminated just days before mobilization.
Why don't we, it just seems like there's good arguments on either side to proceed or not to proceed. So why don't we just go around the table and see what go, if we have four people going one way and three going the other, we'll go with whatever the majority is, so. Does that sound good, or does that sound reasonable?
I'd just like to, just make one suggestion. I'm not sure, I'm not sure the whole board is in a position to make that decision yet because maybe all of us don't know what those potential options are for using that parking lot for, for potential playground area, right? Is everybody up to speed on that notion that was out there?
Rich, are you, are you suggesting that maybe we want to defer this until we discuss this decision, until we get more information?
Well, I guess I'm suggesting that, you know, the, the potential for using a section of that parking lot as playground, which would be the only reason in my mind to hesitate and, and maybe not spend that money, is that a real option? You know, I think that was suggested to us along the way when we asked the administration for some ideas. If in fact, we weren't able to, to reach a resolution with HCA, which, I mean, I think the board consensus is that, we all said it, that's what we want to do. We want to be able to reach a consensus with HCA. But if that didn't happen, what were our options?
Yeah, my, my, my sense from talking to, I talked to Kristin Didio about this, the ETA president. And we received a couple of emails as board members about this. It didn't seem like, it seemed like people were not so thrilled about the parking lot. They kind of liked it.
It's insufficient parking as it is, isn't it?
Well, insufficient parking. And they thought this space wasn't the right one. I think the sentiment there is that ideally, if we could use the city land, that would be the ideal solution. So I think that's, you know, that's the sentiment I got at least from that small sample.
Well, but we, number one is, but we have to operate with the assumption like, what if, what if?
Right.
It doesn't, if it falls through, again, we have to have a backup plan. And I'd hate to spend that money and have to tear out what we just spent $40,000 on.
Right.
And I don't know what's going to happen with that relationship down the line. I mean, we all are optimistic and hopeful, but that's all we have right now. So I guess my vote is, is to defer it.
To defer it, okay.
Yes.
I'd vote to defer it as well.
I guess I'm inclined to proceed because I'm optimistic, but that's just my opinion.
Defer.
Okay, three defers.
I don't like the idea of the playground and the parking lot, so I'd like to proceed. I would, I would vote to proceed. I don't, I don't think it's an ideal.
Randy, it comes down to you.
Proceed.
Proceed, okay. Four, three, okay, we proceed.
Very good.
All right, so we don't need an official vote on that, is that true?
No, no, you just, you haven't changed anything. We're just moving forward on what the plan was.
All right, so the next item is new business. Do you have some news?
No, in order before, I'd like just to make comments where you get.
Mary Rose has suggested the creation of an audit committee, so perhaps you could.
Could I just, just see a couple of things? One, define the audit committee should provide oversight of financial reporting, risk management, internal control, compliance, ethics management, internal auditors, and the external auditors. I put a definition in, in here for you. When I worked in New York, we were required to have an audit committee. What I want to apologize to Mary Rose for is I did put a statement that prejudiced your discussion by saying this is similar to what's expected of a finance committee. I do apologize to you, Mary Rose. I didn't mean to prejudice your discussion. But I wanted to start the discussion off just saying.
All right, well, thank you. I think you've explained your comments pretty well. I, I guess the reason I'm mentioning this is, number one, firstly, all corporate boards have audit committees and compensation committees. I did see that the state of New York requires boards to actually to have an audit committee. And while you're talking about oversight here, this audit committee does have a real audit function. And I did send links around to what, well, to the Lincoln Way. I don't know if anybody saw those. But they actually did have an audit committee that never met. But there's no question when they instituted that, again, they surfaced information, they surfaced information that they would, had not been told, and only, you would only find out through an audit. And the information that they surfaced was that many of their utility bills were past due. They were making partial payments. And, you know, the issue is, is the board, you know, you want to surface information, you are otherwise not going to be told. And, you know, that can be some operational issues such as attendance reports and any number of things. And I think if the board fulfills its role and it operates in a well-managed, in a well-managed way, it establishes an audit committee. And the audit committee should have a charter, should say what its scope of operations are. And I also think that committee should operate in a way that's appropriate to the size of our school, you know, our, our district and its risk. You don't want to go crazy and audit everything every year, but there are certain things I believe the audit, the board should look at and to be proactive about.
What's, how is the audit committee comprised of? Is it board members and staff members, community members?
I think it is, I don't think it's normally staff members. I suppose it could be. But I think sometimes they even have community members with audit background. And again, those are, you know, things that I think would not be an easy thing to set up, or would, I mean, it would have to be thought through and figure out, you know, how it works. But yes, the Lincoln Way, we're two audit, I mean, two board members went and did the audit. And, you know, in that particular case, they, they just pulled the actual bills of things that, that were on the payable list. Rich, as, as Griff just said, this would be something that would be expected from the finance committee. First of all, I don't really feel we have finance committees here. We have, you know, we have somebody who helps us manage our agenda on behalf of the board, and we manage it through committee of the whole. We are, through committee of the whole, are not going to conduct an audit. So I was just wondering though, as finance committee chair, any plans or thoughts about ever conducting, you know, or establishing an audit committee?
I really, I didn't have the sense that we needed one in my year and a, year and a half or so participating on this board. I am familiar with an audit committee. We, we have one on another board that I participate on, and it's made up of board members. And they have a very specific mission and agenda, an oversight mission. I don't, I don't, in my experience here, I don't really see that need for.
up, or would, I mean, it would have to be thought through and figure out, you know, how it works. But yes, the Lincoln Way were two audit, I mean, two board members went and did the audit. And, you know, in that particular case, they, they just pulled the actual bills of things that were on the payable list. Rich, as Griff just said, this would be something that would be expected from the finance committee. First of all, I don't really feel we have finance committees here. We have, you know, we have somebody who helps us manage our agenda on behalf of the board, and we manage it through committee of the whole. We are, through committee of the whole, are not going to conduct an audit. So I was just wondering though, as finance committee chair, any plans or thoughts about ever conducting, you know, or establishing an audit committee?
I really, I didn't have the sense that we needed one in my year and a, year and a half or so participating on this board. I am familiar with an audit committee. We, we have one on another board that I participate on, and it's made up of board members. And they have a very specific mission and agenda, an oversight mission. I don't, I don't, in my experience here, I don't really see that need for what we, for what we have here in this school district. We made a, we made a, what I think is a very significant step a little over a year ago in changing the auditors for this school district to get a fresh set of eyes on this district's finances. And, you know, everything that, that the finance committee considers and sees is out to the entire board. Our monthly payables are out to the entire board. Our, you know, I don't, I don't see anything that, that should be disclosed that isn't already disclosed.
Well, again, that's at this point in time. And I guess my other question to you, and we'll talk a little bit about the Lamberson matter, that was something, you know, and it's, you know, I refer to it largely as a payroll, you know, payroll accounting issue. But maybe the board should be looking at some of, you know, making sure from time to time that the board is, you know, the chief administrator is actually paid in accordance with its contract. I mean, to me, that would be an issue that is particularly when somebody's about ready to walk out the door. And again, we've talked about, you know, attendance issues or other operational issues. An example of something an audit should have been done on ages ago was, you know, all the complaints we had years ago, before I was even on the board regarding the situation in special ed, the IEPs, the way they were being managed. And they were coming consistently from the community, and maybe the board should have asked the ISBE to come in and do an audit. Some of this stuff, you do get expert help or, and that's something, you know, when there are some complaints, the board needs to, I mean, the answer is, you know, the board doesn't go in and ask questions or second guess the administration. You know, you just get an objective set of eyes and do the audit. So as I said, I agree with you, you know, Rich, in terms of, there is a specific mission and.
So, Rich, you know, prior to changing auditors, we had a highly respected auditing firm, you know, highly credited in the state. However, they did not bring certain items to the board's attention, as Mary Rose talks about some of the failings in the Lamberson matter. What's, what's to say that just changing firms is going to keep that from happening again?
A board can, I don't think can ever solely rely on an auditing firm to do their work for them. It's the board's job to ask those questions and maybe even to insist on a greater degree of an audit. We all sat through those presentations, or most of us did, a year ago by the different auditing firms and looked at their proposals. And they can come in and do a flyby audit, or they can, you know, dig deep in this section this year and that section the next year. And that's at the board's discretion, what we want them to do. But we can never solely rely on an auditing firm.
Well, I think there's a distinction here. We're talking about the auditors and the audit as far as the accounting audit.
Right.
Whereas that you can audit specifically, when you use the word audit, I think it's used generally to analyze other functions, whether it be bills or whatnot, I think, or several of the things that you suggested. I'd be interested in a proposal. If you've come forward and if you can figure out exactly what kind of projects this group would work on, so on and so forth, because there's a lot more to do than just do a financial audit. The financial audit would not reveal the inconsistencies that we had. Because they're looking at, it's a different view of things. But I would entertain it. I just don't know much about it. If you can come up with more ideas and on how to do it.
I think those are good points. I guess my question, or two questions. One is, if there are specific things that you think we should investigate further, should we, do we need another committee for that? Or can we undertake that in one of the current committees? Like, for example, finance or some specific area that we think should be researched?
Well, I don't, like I said before, we, we have a committee of the whole structure, so, you know, I don't really see where the board currently has committees. You know, I'll look into it and see what sort of things I find on the internet of what other, you know, if I can, what others do. And, you know, I'm not an expert on this either, but I, you know, but I do think it is worth discussing. And certainly with the governance audit next year, maybe a board member ought to, you know, be closer to it, you know, in terms of making sure that, you know, for example, that they understand what are the key issues that, you know, some are more important issues than others. And that we understand what is going to be audited by the state and what isn't. I mean, we know that the whole series of mandates and I just, you know, as I said, my big thing is that I want us to be a well-managed organization, well-managed organizations look to surface information and they don't beg to be told.
Do we have any comments from, I haven't heard much from this end of the table about this stuff.
My only question is, for our strategic plan, is there a place that would fit? Can we put it, you know, where would it naturally fit into our strategic plan? Whether it's in the maintaining our finances with our goals or hiring competent staff and how do they, how do they undergo their job and, you know, where does this all fit in? I just want to know. We move forward, I'm not against looking at details, I just want to know where does it fit with what we're doing.
I, the only thought I had, Rachel had already said, is I would certainly, I have no issue with an audit committee if it's got a clear purpose and that we're working within a certain set of parameters so that it doesn't get too out of control or, you know, using a lot of administrative time or, but I certainly don't have any objections to an audit committee in that idea.
Well, you know, they are supposed to be focused, they should have a mission.
Right.
And it's something the board has to determine, and I would think, have to determine how often the audit committee is going to do it and who is going to.
Right. So once we come, come back with a little more detail on that, I.
Yeah, it's a little foggy for me. I'm not sure where.
Because I think there's so many, as I said, that can't be audited. But I feel like it needs to have a purpose.
Well, you'd have to rotate it, you know, and surface those things. You couldn't audit the same issues every year.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts. I kind of echo your, your thoughts on the audit, kind of a broader audit, auditing process programs as opposed to just the financial aspects. I think that's what you're suggesting, Rachel.
I was just saying that the term audit could be, means so many things.
Right. And I would like to, I would like to see the audit committee maybe take on that broader meaning. So that we could audit, say, say in the past, we had requests to audit the special ed department, you know, and not just financial things, we were talking about procedural. And if perhaps we had conducted that audit, or been involved in that audit, we could have caught some of the issues a lot sooner. The oversight role that we have is, it's the most important role of this board. And I would think by creating an audit committee, it might just put a little point on the pencil that would bring focus to that oversight role that might be overlooked in our education, what's your committee again?
Policy.
Policy and finance.
The only other thing I would like to know, sorry, Rich, if you want to.
No, go ahead.
The only thing I was going to note, and it's just, I mean, you can agree with me or not, agree with me on this, and that's okay. I do think a lot of, a lot of the things we're talking about are systemic of having poor leadership as well, issues falling through the cracks, complaints. And I do think at this point, we just hired a new leader. I would like, you know, the priority to be focused on having our new leader look in, you know, like taking charge in this and seeing where she might think deficits are happening. I understand that it's also the board's duty. But for me, I disagree with a little bit of the point, pinpoint of the oversight because I, I think, I think a lot of the things that get overlooked are due to poor leadership.
The only comment I'd like to make is that every board thinks they hire good leadership.
Right, right, right.
I mean, and, I mean, they think they hire the best available. And I do think we have hired a very fine superintendent, and I'm very pleased and proud that you're coming on board. As I said, I'm interested in good management day in and day out, regardless of who the leader is.
Could I make a comment? We're talking about, we're talking about this board having oversight, which we all took oaths and we all take very seriously. And the oversight that, that's been suggested that we would have in an audit committee is currently oversight that we do have right now. We all have the ability within the current structure to request things and to focus on things. And I hesitate to advocate creating another layer and another committee just, just to do that. I don't know what.
I agree with what you're saying. Is it, is it normal for school boards in your experience to have an audit committee like this?
Not in this state. It was common, it was required in the state of New York.
What fraction of school boards in Illinois have this kind of thing?
I can't answer.
Do you have any ideas?
Very small percentage. David, have you, are aware of any audit committees that you worked with in addition to a finance committee?
No.
No, I, not either. So, they may exist, but.
I think one of the things a board might look at is the Regional Office of Education Compliance Review. There is a, you've been through it a couple of times, I've been through it a couple of times. If you, you might want to look at all the things that the regional office audits. All of the topics that are covered during the compliance review might actually spur some thoughts about other areas that you'd like to get into that are related to what is already being included in the review. I'm offering this because you might have ideas that are being, that you want to explore that the Regional Office of Education is already.
Doing it for you.
Going to, going to do it as part of the compliance review that has to be completed every three or four years, five years. And then also ask your independent auditor, Edor Casella, when we went through the interview process, we asked them during each auditor's interview, what are some of the other types of ancillary engagements that school districts have asked you to, to perform? You know, have you done something to get into greater depth in, say, payroll, you know, internal controls or student activities internal controls or things like that? And we do have documentation of internal controls that through our normal annual independent audit, the independent auditor is supposed to review. So laying out all of the pieces that are already being covered by the independent auditor and the regional office might be a good starting point as far as maybe zeroing in on, on specific areas that you would like to peel back more layers of the onion, so to speak.
Just a comment about, yes, we made a great stride forward by changing our auditor, but I also think that the great, part of the great stride was also going from a cash basis to accrual. The notes on the financial, we're, our financial statement were substantially more in depth.
So, David, this, this issue of the past 18 months with DeViso Township and the financial losses that they had due to poor investments of, of school board or school district monies, would, is that, could that have been avoided with better or closer auditing by a, an auditor that we would hire? Or would a committee of board members might have been able to unearth some of that before it got so far out of control?
Well, one way of articulating that is the Illinois Public Funds Investment Act and asking an auditor to make sure that your treasurer is doing everything in compliance with the Illinois Public Funds Investment Act. I don't think it would have been detected, and that's my own personal opinion, because there was gross misrepresentation, stating of assets that were fictitious. That type of fraud is, is just blatantly criminal. And it's, it's hard to detect that when you're trying to find out information and the information you're getting is, is just totally falsified.
David, you mentioned something else about the, I guess, is the, the state comes in and does audits every three or four years. Again, maybe I wasn't on the board when the last one happened and the board saw an audit report, but everything was all sweetness and light and, you know, in the past and.
Well, my suggestion is that you look at the itemization of the categories and pieces of information that the compliance review is, is testing and, and looking at the school district and, and making sure that we have a yes checkbox. Or if we don't, then that's information that should go to the board or should have gone to the board to say that, yeah, we've fallen short of that compliance review in these specific areas. But you might want to look at all the areas that are, that are even covered during that compliance review, and that might spur some interest in, by board members in additional categories.
Are there any further comments about the audit committee that someone has not already said?
I'd like to hear more about it. About what, why New York, what, what did committees do about in New York? And I was going to say, just because nobody in Illinois is doing it, doesn't mean it's not a bad idea.
So, Rich wants to hear more about it. Why don't we go around the room, maybe start this side this time? Do you want to hear more about it?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. I mean, I, I'm not opposed to it anyway, but I, I would like to see a clear proposal before we create a committee, you know, something with a mission and parameters. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm still foggy, so I'm happy to hear about it. I just think I'm foggy about what the details are.
More details, okay.
Sure, more discussion.
Okay. Sounds like we have consensus for more discussion.
Throw it to Pat. He'd be very happy to.
Next item is old business, the Blithe windows.
I know you're going to quickly approve this, but Bob, this is the big story, not only of tonight, but one of the big success stories of any board I've seen in 25 years as superintendent. Let me tell you why. A year ago, I heard you had to replace the windows over at Blithe Park. There was about a million plus price tag on it. Business managers, superintendents, architects, oh, you guys want to replace windows? We'll bid that out, we'll replace your windows. Because of the relentless scrutinizing of this, this board, pushing us to find creative more ways linked to the historical preservation issue without, you know, it was not something easy to do and it took months and months. Somehow, David Architect came up with a very creative solution that tonight you're going to approve rather than a million plus, like a million three, less than $300,000, saving the taxpayers a million bucks. Now, I know you're not going to sit here and brag about that, but I can do it for you.
Well, thank you.
So I thought that, you should be getting credit for that, seriously. It's very seldom I've ever seen this.
I'd just like to add a couple of comments to what, to what Dr. Paul said. One is that we'd like to thank the preservation committee because they, they had a lot of good suggestions and they worked cooperatively with us from the start and it was great. I'd also like to, to thank Mr. Sellers because he could have said, you know what, this is unconventional, it's, I don't want to get into it, I don't want to think about it. He actually followed up the, the leads from the preservation committee and he, you know, he took the initiative and actually found this solution and.
Creative solution.
Creative solution. So, I think as a board, I think we really want to encourage this in all employees. I mean, if we could do this, you know, in general, because I'm sure there's, there's millions of ways we could, you know, do things better and we do them more efficiently. And if we could just take that approach, you know, in general, I think that would be really great for the district.
I wanted to say, no offense to the board, I, I think we can't take credit, but I really wanted to thank David's persistence in this and really thinking out of the box on this one and working with the historical commission. Thank you so much. This is a great result.
And really, the credit goes to Carol Dyson, Chief Architect with the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency.
But you found her.
Take the credit.
Yeah.
Provide as the lead.
So with that, is there a motion to approve the bid for the Blithe windows retrofit to double pane as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Marjorie, can you call open?
Mr. Brockway?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mrs. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Cliver?
Aye.
Ms. Mancio?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is the preliminary fiscal year 2016-17 budget. I don't know if Mr. Sellers has any additional comments or...
In the interest of time, I emphasized with the board that we should be...
I'm reading it. I'm getting through it.
Be paying special attention to capital outlay because at the June board meeting, we'll be asking you to approve the capital outlay list as presented with a total dollar amount of $403,448 at, in the present draft. If there's any changes to this draft, we will itemize those changes. But there are way too many items for me to go through item by item, so, you know, I don't think the board really wants me to do that. So, I will just say, whatever questions you have, we'll be glad to answer to the best we can, or if we can't give you the full answer tonight, make sure that we get the full answer for you.
Any questions, Mr. Sellers? Questions on the second item, which is the nurse health aide proposal. Maybe Dr. Paul can explain what the proposal is exactly.
Well, there, in a perfect world, all schools would have a certified registered nurse in every building, all, and, you know, all the time their students are present. However, it would be very costly and the recommendation we're giving you is a cost-conscious issue, recommendation. We are recommending that you have three registered nurses, full-time one here at Ames, one split between, like you have currently, between Hollywood and Blithe Park, and also a full-time one at Hauser and a full-time health aide, a licensed practical nurse at Central, and a part-time .82 licensed practical nurse between Blithe Park and, and Hollywood. Which would be a minimum increase of $13,000 over what we're currently paying, but would increase the coverage, actually increase the full FTE coverage both at Hauser and, because right now we have a .82 registered nurse at Hauser and a full-time nurse at Central. We will have two full-time people with the registered nurse working with the licensed practical nurse at Hauser Central. And then with our two small elementaries, have more coverage in those two buildings.
More than we currently have?
More than we currently have. And they're not related at all, but if you look at the money you're going to get from the LANSI program you'd approve tonight, which is about $15,000, would take care of that cost, it would be a wash. So, you're really not spending any additional money for next year if you want to look at, even though they're not related in any way.
Do you have to, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I was just going to say, have you made the case in the past for why we need greater nursing services? I mean, what, are, are we underserved in this sense?
Well, I think, I think the teachers or the nurses have come to, I knew they came to Pat early, especially between the Blithe Park and Hollywood situation where when the nurse is not in Hollywood, the secretary is the principal, is the acting nurse. And when you have 10 kids, sick kids into, in the nurse's office and you have the phone ringing of a parent that needs to pick up their kid, it's a, it's a difficult situation. Same thing happens at Blithe Park during certain times of the year. So, that, that's, now, I have a very hard line about this. I, for financial reasons, I limited all registered nurses and certified nurses and put in health aides at high school. It was very controversial when I, we were going broke. Because legally, there's a lot of limitations to what a nurse can do. They can't give an aspirin. Now, you know, there's a whole lot of things that they're very limited they can do. However, with the special ed requirements, which I've shared with you, with the number of 504, I think we have 100 kids with 504s in Hauser and, Hauser and Central combined? It does take a registered nurse to participate in some of these special needs, with these special needs kids.
What's a 504?
504 is a plan for a child who has a disability but not necessarily needs an IEP plan. So, it's often for medical reasons, much as any child that has a medical plan, it has to be in a 504 plan. That would be for diabetes, for allergies, how to handle all those emergency procedures. So, it's critical that the nurse handle those 504 plans.
So, aren't we substantially limited with the, the ability of the health aides to treat certain kids? Are we going to have to have two, those other three nurses travel to where the health aide is for whatever, anytime there's any of those situations?
The registered nurse is already traveling between Blithe Park and, and Hollywood. That's already going on.
So, that's going to continue to...
That would continue.
So, what's the benefit of having a health aide if there's so much they can't do?
They can do almost everything a registered nurse can do.
Because we're getting LPNs.
Yes. Because we're getting licensed practical nurses.
But are they also, isn't there a separate certification too for school nurses as well?
Yes.
And can LPNs attain this?
Well, those, well, can they? Yes, they can, but they would have to go back to school.
The registered nurse with the certification that we need is one who will be able to perform the duties at IEP meetings. And there's certain certifications for that. The LPNs will not be able to do that, but the RNs will cover that and the LPNs will cover the buildings when there are those...
We will still have three RNs on staff.
That's correct.
So, my, my concern was that, so we still have the full-time RN at Ames, one to Blithe and Hollywood, you know, and now we, we went from having two nurses at the Central-Hauser campus, which...
1.82.
Right. 1.82 nurses for 1,000 students. It seems like the reduction, the situation at Hauser Central is what would concern me is that, is the one RN that we will have there, are they going to be working together, first of all?
Yes.
So, the Hauser nurse now going to take on, like, I don't know how it works currently, is what I guess I'm asking. Do the Hauser and Central nurse currently work together or will this be like a new way of doing that?
They, they do work together. There's times when the Central nurse has to cover first in the morning because the hospital is not there, which causes issues and problems for second morning. So, that is not...
That's because the Hauser was appointed too.
1.82, right.
Was not a full-time person.
So, we'd be looking at them sharing some of the duties of covering buildings and such when once at an IEP meeting and they would share some of the duties.
So, my concern, my question is, not my concern, my question is that, so, moving from having 1.82 RNs at the Hauser Central Campus, we're moving to 1.0 RNs who can do the IEP thing. That worries me a little bit in the sense of, I, I really just don't know the, like, the workload of it, but is that, you know, that's 1,000 of our students in one campus. And I feel like what we're doing is, in order to provide coverage everywhere else, which I agree with, I feel like we're providing coverage and then slightly reducing coverage almost, not to, not real, not coverage in hours.
Actually, the coverage would go up because there'd be one LPN and one RN.
Right, right, right. I mean, the coverage in, of what the RN can do. Like, is it, is that one RN at the Hauser Central Campus, is her, is her workload going to exponentiate?
And what happens if she doesn't show up that day? Go ahead.
Then all this is a problem, though.
We get substitutes, we go through nursing agencies, we get substitutes presently right now.
So, how much would we have to, what would happen to our cost of the subbing agency if we were to hire the LPN in lieu of just hiring an RN?
Hire an LPN instead, instead of what, the three RNs?
What would happen to that, that agency nursing cost if we hired the LPN instead of just hiring one more RN? Meaning, are we going to put more burden on having to hire more substitute RNs?
No, you only hire substitutes when they're, when they're...
When they're out absent.
When they're out absent.
Oh, yeah. That's the only time we would hire them.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not like saying this couldn't work. I'm, because I know nothing of it, I'm asking, will that work? You know, having the one RN for, for a large majority of the population?
Here's an interesting statement. This is from Jessica Gertes, and this I passed on to everybody. The RN, this is the RN consultant for ISBE, for our state organization, encourages districts to hire LPNs as they can perform the same day-to-day tasks and are less costly to districts. That's from our, a state record, state person that's in charge of the RN consultant for ISBE. So...
So, in the, the numbers that...
I got that off of conversation Pam had.
So, I think your, your question, Linda, is, is very specific. Your question is basically, if we have one registered nurse at the, at the Hauser Central Complex with 1,000 students, are they going to be able to do all the IEP plans?
Right.
That's the only registered nurses can do.
Right. That's, that's my question because it seems like that, that job then grows a little bit.
I think that's our, our hope. I mean, you would look at that and we're trying to do this in the most cost-efficient way. And again, if it doesn't work, we may have to revisit it for next year. But I think it's a good baseline to, to start with. You know, there's, you know, the possibility of trying to restructure how we're using the nurses within the district too.
It doesn't have to be one building.
Right, right. And they, they share duties as it is right now, even across the district at times when they have to. And there's a possibility.
But is it, is it correct that, so, that what Dr. Paul has read is that essentially, in terms of the day-to-day functions, dispensing medicine or taking temperature and all that kind of stuff, there's very little difference between the registered nurses and licensed practitioners?
For example, in Lombard, we had just two RNs across the seven buildings.
Okay.
And the LPNs in every building.
Okay. So, an LPN can still take care of...
Correct. They can do the medications, they can do emergency procedures.
Like diabetic, yeah. I mean, you know, okay. But that's, that was my only concern. And, and I say, I'm saying this based on the fact that I know very little about, about this.
The RNs do more what Pam was saying. They, they fill the IEP role and then oversee the LPNs for procedural things or, and Pam was very creative when she, you're not tooting your horn loud enough because Pam looked at the IEP, medical-related IEPs and felt very strongly that the three registered nurses could meet the needs across the district with relationship to meetings and demands. And like she said, if it didn't work, she, we would revisit it. But, but we had a very long conversation about it, so I want everyone to know.
Right now, you know, revisit it.
Do you want to give us a registered nurse over at Central?
We'll take that. I'm certainly not questioning it. If you guys feel comfortable with it, that's, that's good for me.
I understand. I just, I just worry about, since we're, we're already losing a senior nurse, I think, for, we're actually going to be saving no matter what we do. And I think for the small difference, we might as well get an RN because I just am afraid we're going to be taxing, for a building of that size, when I say building, Central-Hauser unit building, that we're going to be taxing one nurse way too much.
So, it's like $20 an hour to $36, $37 an hour.
Yeah, I consider that nominal.
From what, what Ms. Shaw's saying, they can, if that person is the Hauser nurse or the Hauser Central nurse, this is overwhelmed, they could bring in a nurse from Ames or Hollywood to sort of help with the IEP.
For the IEPs and the special ed issues.
So, is there any further discussion of, of this proposal?
Okay, I have one question and this is just logistic, or, so, on this sheet where we have the alternatives listed, it says health aide. Does that mean LP, like, are these numbers?
LP, health aides, licensed practical nurses.
Okay, so that's, okay, so there's, again, I don't know the field, so...
We would, yeah. Those are the same thing. Because I, well, you can have a health aide without an LPN, but then you would want an RN.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. So, when I look at health aide listed here, I wasn't thinking that means LPN. I think it was, I thought that was listing a health aide. So, the numbers listed for the amount are LPNs.
All LPNs.
Thank you.
Question, what if in the alternative that we, and I appreciate you guys thinking through this and dealing with thoughts on this, is that we hired another RN and instead of hiring an RN sub for when an RN is absent, if we hired a health aide in those situations? So, at least you still had three RNs on staff to rotate as needed.
I'm not sure what your question is.
Yes, they do.
Say that, say that if you had four RNs, because right now we have nurse subs, right?
No, I think we've...
Only when they're absent.
Only when they're absent, right.
Right, right. We wouldn't have to, when, one of them was...
We're not always able to get nurse subs. We have a couple of nurse subs that we can hire that are in our pool, but they're not always available in that case, we have to go to nursing agencies. They're not always available.
Would it be easier to not have, would we not have to get a sub if there was an absence, one absence of a nurse if we had four RNs or not? Meaning, could we get and just get a health aide for the subs?
Can we get a health to, to sub for an RN?
Right.
Yes, we probably could.
Okay. Would that be significantly cheaper than having to get an RN sub?
Yes. I mean, if we just use an LPN and...
Well, we get that through the agencies when we get nurse subs, we can do that as well.
This would be a fairly rare event, that the...
Yeah, that, that's not, doesn't happen too often.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I was, I think the agencies are, are high, that they charge pretty much the same, I think, often.
Ms. Rockwell, do you have a comment?
I would say, I think when you get sub nursing care, you're paying a high rate for that through an agency. So, I know, same thing, like, it sounds like you look for a pool of maybe community nurses that are willing to come in and sub and probably, probably your same sub rate.
Because, because the agency takes a big cut, you know, so you're paying more right away.
Trying to avoid it. All right.
Are there discussion on this? Okay, if there's no further discussion, is there a motion to approve alternative to the nurse health aide staffing for 2016, 2017?
Second.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, then Margie, can you call over please?
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Ms. Mancio?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Cliver?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Morello?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education Workshop Agreements. So, we've had two workshops in the last month, one as a board with our board expectations, and then we had another workshop with our new superintendent the end of April. And so, the woman who ran the workshops, Barbara Tony, who's very experienced herself, she was a board member for 16 years, she led the workshops and she solicited these agreements from us. She didn't make them up, she solicited them, so she summarized them here in these agreements. So, the question is, are there any comments that people have or any, any changes in the language from what we agreed on in those meetings that anyone would like to propose?
I just have a statement I would like to read. I am able to support the board superintendent's expectations, but not the board agreements. I am concerned that board members with agendas will use these agreements as a club to promote group think and stamp out diversity of thought and expression and approach. Why do I believe this? Because a board member declared in a public meeting that they wanted to hold board members accountable. I presume that the governance agreements were the tool that the board member wanted to use. This bold statement did not provide me with a comfort level that indicated that the board member wanted to establish a positive working relationship with all members. On at least three occasions, I have been rudely told that I am in violation of some IASB best practice, two of which we did not adopt. If someone is attempting to overzealous interpretations of agreements we don't even have, what's the plan when we actually have them? Governance agreements are not about limiting human interaction and regulating board by dynamics, but some board members want to make them so. I have been told that board members lose their rights as community members when they get on the board. This is so illogical to me, to me as to suggest a hidden agenda, one that does not serve the public interest. I also have concerns about taking recommendations in these matters from the Illinois Association of School Boards. The IASB is not a standards-making organization. It is a taxpayer-funded lobbying organization which lobbies the state for taxpayer money. Its recent significant achievement was to have itself established as a single-source provider for mandatory board training resulting in a significant income provided by taxpayers. Numerous publications, including the Chicago Tribune, have identified the IASB's executive director, Roger Eddy, as the poster example of public greed and corruption. Roger Eddy serves simultaneously as a school board superintendent and as a state representative in the General Assembly. His board president and secretary held paid positions in his campaign. That's just for starters. Do you want to get your code of conduct from an organization that's this man at its helm? The IASB says its recommendations are based on nationwide research. Well, it might be worthwhile to look at governance agreements in other states. You'll find that some come close to private sector agreements in terms of transparency and access. I have seen some that provide for board member visits to schools, asking only that it is a professional courtesy of notification to the superintendent, as well as further discussion if significant issues develop. Some are also clear that board members retain rights as private citizens. You will also note different codes of conduct from state to state. I have been to three of these workshops and the underlying message that I hear from I have been to three of these workshops, and the underlying message that I hear from the IASB is that while board members have an individual legal duty to perform an oversight role, they have no faith in board members to perform their role in a responsible manner. They do not acknowledge that board members are elected officials and have responsibilities to the public. I wholeheartedly support the superintendent's section. Generally, I feel I can't support the board agreements 99% of the time. Still, I prefer to make it clear that I work for the voters. Unfortunately, too many board members, like those at Lincoln Way, College of DuPage, Niles, Lincolnwood, are invested in thwarting the board's efforts at legitimate oversight. I am not trying to convince anything, anybody of anything, but it's clear that I thought long and hard about this, and I felt I had to say this.
If you have comments, Mary Rose, does anyone else have any comments about these board agreements or these superintendent agreements? If they don't have any comments, then we will bow down these at the next business meeting. Next item on the agenda is the paving project, construction project.
Bicycle racks.
So I guess this actually is an action item, though it does not say that on the agenda, so I think, Mr. Sellers, did you want to summarize the...
In his recommendation, yeah, he does ask for approval of that, of the allowance, right, of the $20,000.
The motion is to approve the $20,621 to purchase U-shaped bicycle racks, upgrading from the wave-shaped racks to originally specified. That's correct.
This is the same topic and the same information that the board was presented on May 3rd. There really isn't any change. We're still seeing what I would call not quite enough volume of actual usage to warrant going with the 25% increase up to 210. Our current bicycle parking capacity is 168, and this recommendation is basically to replicate what we have existing. And we feel that there are certain peaks during the year where we get close to our capacity, but at this time, I think I mentioned before that we can order additional movable racks if we get to the point where those are very much needed.
Thank you. So at this point, is there a motion to approve the attached proposed use of construction allowance of $24,621 to purchase U-shaped bicycle racks, bicycle racks, upgrading the proposed wave-shaped racks to originally specified?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion about the bicycle racks? Okay, Margie, can you hold over please?
Mrs. Morello?
No.
Ms. Mancio?
Aye.
Mr. Brockway?
Uh, no.
Ms. Cliver?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So that brings us to the second public comment period. So do we have any public comments from the audience at this point? No public comments, then the next meeting, the June 7th meeting, the whole meeting is canceled, and the next business meeting is, you're sorry, you had a...
One additional meeting, we'd like to have a tense schedule for June 2nd at 6:00 PM, a special meeting of the board, be probably one agenda item.
At 6:00 PM on June 2nd?
On June 2nd. It's right, it's Thursday night, right before the graduation for the middle school, for Hauser, and if the board members want to attend the graduation, I know some of you will be, you should be done by 6:30, so you'll still have plenty of time to get to the high school.
Does that date and time work for people? Does anyone, anyone cannot make that, or...
We just forged it.
It's June 2nd.
I can make it. I'd have to just have a spouse home earlier, I can work on that.
What day of the week is it?
It's Thursday night.
And what, did you say 6:15?
6:30, well, it could, that's up to you. If 6:30 works better for you, I think you still have plenty of time to get to the high